Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Board of Selectments meeting for Tuesday, January 26th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you could indulge me, I'd like to request a moment of silence to -- for us to contemplate our duties to the town, and also for the safety and safe return of our soldiers, both overseas and in the United States. In accordance with master general law, I have to announce that this meeting is being recorded by East Long Meadow Cable Access, and also by the Selectments Office, and I have to ask if anyone else is recording this meeting.
Chris Kedrow with the reminder.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, our first appointment tonight is Keith Brownlee. Would you like to come up? I see they made it so we can shake hands now. How are you tonight?
Good.
And you are here regarding a --
Request.
A health insurance request.
Yeah.
I don't know if you'd like to briefly, for the public, explain the situation.
I believe the policy for the town is that if you leave the insurance, a retiree, if you leave the insurance, you're not allowed to come back. I taught at the high school for 34 years, and I retired in June of 2013. And we are -- my wife and I are moving. My wife's son had a granddaughter. She's gonna be one-year-old in two weeks, and we'd like to be a little closer to her. The only option I have through the town right now, I do -- right now, I have Health New England, but as soon as I don't have a residency here, I lose Health New England. The only option is the Blue Cross and Blue Shield, which is $1,800 a month. I can't afford that. We're gonna switch to my wife's health insurance. She's gonna work another year, and then, at that point, I'm kinda see what I have to do to get health insurance. I can't stay with the town if the only option is Blue Cross and Blue Shield, and it appears that's gonna be the only option for me. So what I'm asking is that if some option comes up in the next two, three, four years, that I have an opportunity to come back. And right now, that policy is that I can't. So what I'm asking is a waiver. It's not gonna cost the town any money. In fact, it's gonna save the town some money right now, 'cause if I went to Blue Cross and Blue Shield, I believe it's $22,000 a year, and over the -- I'm 59, so for six years, we're talking, you know, well over $100,000 of the town share, and I would have to pay the same amount. So I'm just looking for, just to be, have a chance to come back if something affordable is offered. Now, I know that there's a Cadillac tax that was postponed for a couple of years, and that was kind of, I was hoping that something would, that would trigger something that would make something affordable for me, but it apparently not, nothing's gonna happen in, you know, for right now. So that's all I'm asking.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board? I know, Billy, you have, I believe you have the written, we have the, you know, obviously our, what our town policy is, is if a retiree and/or spouse dependent, or dependent terminates enrollment and becomes ineligible for continuing enrollment, the retiree and their spouse dependents will lose eligibility to participate in the future and cannot re-enroll at a future date regardless of a qualifying event or life changes. I wish we had our --
That's what I was gonna ask.
But she's, I didn't speak to her. I know she's got some --
Have you spoken with Corinne?
Yes, I have.
And Daisy?
Yeah.
Okay. 'Cause that's, yeah, go ahead.
And what did she, what was her advice?
She showed me that paper. Same thing. She said, "This is the policy right now," and I don't know the purpose of the policy. I don't know how long it's been in place, and, you know, I'm, I first sent an anonymous letter to see, I was the one that sent the anonymous letter, to start with, only because Corinne suggested that I shouldn't mention me at first and make it a specific thing, looking for a policy issue. I believe it was tabled, and nothing ever came of it. So therefore, since we're gonna be moving probably in May, I don't have a lot of choices. I figured this was my, my best option.
Okay. Any questions or comments? 'Cause I don't think, I mean, this is my personal opinion, I'm gonna wanna speak to, speak to Corinne, because one thing, you know, when you start, and I'm not saying that this is a definite no, but when you start making, what's the word I'm looking for? When you start making exceptions to the rule, then the exceptions become the rule. So, like I said, I wanna get together with Corinne, and we can discuss this, and we'll be happy to get you some, for some form of an answer soon, but I don't, I don't think we can make a decision, in my personal opinion, that we can make a decision tonight without her input.
That was my first question, to speak to Corinne, to see what was what. I just wondered, I think we've done this before, but it's come from, been generated through Corinne, but I'm not sure.
I mean, we've done it --
Well, we've done waivers, but not exactly this way, but we've done waivers before in the past.
I, see, I was, that's why I wanna talk to her, 'cause I was under the impression that we'd turn down a request for a waiver, so.
Okay.
You know, you have a younger brain than --
Yeah, she's a boy. She couldn't make it tonight. She had a family problem, so.
Okay.
You know, I just, I think probably we should table it, there'll be a little more information from her.
Okay. That's fair.
All right, yeah, well, yeah, but we won't --
I've got a few months.
Only because, yeah, we're moving.
Okay. I appreciate your time and your consideration.
We need to do that, but.
That's, that's fine. Like I said, I'm not moving tomorrow. But, like I said, I figured at this point, since the town is not giving me any affordable option, that's the only option out of state, is the $1,800 a month. That's the only option. I was just hoping for an opportunity to come back if another option presented itself down the road.
Okay.
Okay?
Pretty good.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks, Keith.
You too. All right. What we'll do is, we'll do the approval of minutes, but we'll hold off on the one till Attorney Donahue gets here, I think that was the 29th. So what we'll do is, I'd like to make a motion to approve the open session minutes of March 17th and 31st of 2015.
So moved.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'd like to make a motion to approve the open session minutes of December 8th and 22nd of 2015.
With corrections.
With corrections.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve the executive session minutes of March 17th and 31st, 2015, with any corrections.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, I'll make a motion to approve the December 8th, 2015 executive session minutes.
With corrections.
With corrections.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I will hold off on 29th, like I said, till the, till Attorney Donahue gets here. The next item of business, under Old Business, is Civil Service List. We've been notified that we were gonna get a civil, we were gonna get a civil service list for potential police candidates, but I guess there's a, an officer from another town who will, who's interested in joining the East Long Meadow Police Force. And obviously, what that would do is, he's already been trained.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
I get a question on that.
You're probably asking the wrong person, but go ahead.
Well, I just wanna know, in the other town, where this person is from is non-civil service.
Okay.
And they're coming here for civil service, so I don't know myself whether that person has to take the civil service test to come over here on a civil service.
I think he would, 'cause we have to hire from the civil service list.
Huh?
I would think they would, because we're supposed to hire from the civil service list.
See, and I was under the impression that, that he could without it, so.
'Cause he's already, I don't know.
So what we'll do is, we'll find out about that.
It'd save us money, but I'm just not sure he'd come over.
Yeah. We'll find out about that. And that also goes along with the next question, with the hiring of one or two officers, so we can, that question, we can't really answer until we get the first one answered. Because if we, if we can transfer one over, then we won't be, we won't be hiring as many, so.
Do you think Jim Donahue would know that answer?
He might. He might. We can hold that off until he gets here. So, yeah, we'll hold off on item A until, now we get, the next item is an update from our attorney, Town Administrator.
Right. So a number of things. We received a MEMA grant from the fire, for the fire department of $4,000. You should have that in your packet there. Also, something new that came up was that I was notified that the surrounding communities agreement, if we're interested in trying to pursue those from the MGM Casino, we have by February 1st to apply for that. Talking around to some department heads, they were saying that they thought that the rotary, right in front of the town hall, which has three roads that come to the rotary from Connecticut, that we may have some impact, and it might be good to apply for the $100,000 in order to, just to study the rotary and see how it might be impacted. So just letting you know, I'd, I'd like to pursue that, right? The old fire station, two departments have shown some interest in it, Park and Recreation, and the Senior Center, so I'll be talking to them about what they may intend to do with that, and I'll report back to you on that also.
Don't we have an agreement already with the J.C.s?
It hasn't been signed yet.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Have you given it to them?
To the J.C.s? We haven't, no. Jim Donahue said that we need to officially dispose of the property before we can sign a contract with them.
Okay.
But, so I sent out a notice to all the departments, saying that, "Do you need this building?"
Oh, I see what you mean.
And so they're, they're coming back to me now, whether or not they think they need it or not. Annual Town Reports, all the department heads are sending in the information, so we're gathering all that together, and we hope to be able to move that along pretty, pretty soon. Today was the last day for filing papers for elections at 5:00, so that's been processed by our town clerk. Deborah Baransky, former selectman, I met her coming out of the town hall, and she gave me a packet of, for a request for a TIF, and we can talk about that in the next meeting, but I just thought I'd bring you, let you know that they're interested in the old Lennox Saw Building.
Well, it's, what it is, is, 'cause I actually was in on the first, on the meeting with her and the people from Lennox, is they have a division in Maine, and the division in Maine has, I believe, 90 to 100 employees, and they wanted to move that division to either East Long Meadow, Mexico, or China. So we were pushing for it to come to East Long Meadow.
Right.
And what, and obviously, and what they're looking for, like you said, is, they're looking for some tax incentives, which, in theory, we can do, but it has to be a warrant item on the town, warrant for the election, so.
Great.
So if we can discuss that at a future meeting, we can decide, obviously, how to proceed, and go from there.
Great. And then, we had a letter from the state saying that the chief procurement officer and who's allowed to be involved with procurement of products needs to be updated, so I'm in the process of doing that also, sending that to the state.
Okay. Great. All right. So I think you, I think you actually took care of, maybe you didn't. I was just saying, you took care of item 7, 'cause you were talking about town, annual town reports.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So now, we're up to item 6, which is the, the police chief. From what I understand, and our esteemed town attorney just walked in, we have to, we have to revote on the, putting the position out to bid, because it should've been done in open session.
Correct.
So, you actually have to come up here. I thought I handled that quite well.
Well, you did. You did. But I think the explanation should be, is that I failed to, to mention to the board when you were making that motion. I got caught up in the discussion about the terms and conditions that you thought should apply to the, to the contract, and things that should be done. And I wasn't focused on the fact that you were actually making a motion to go out to bid, and I apologize for that. That's my responsibility. I should've identified it, and I didn't. But the vote was taken, and what you need to do is have another motion, get a more discussion, pretty much about the same issues that you wanted to talk about, and then revote going forward.
Okay.
Yeah. Through the board?
Yes.
Do we have to amend the last vote?
Right.
We have to amend the last vote?
Well, the last vote is, in effect, really not, not effective, and so you should, this would be, this would be a new vote on the same subject matter, and for the same basic purposes, but along the lines of the board.
Couldn't the motion be read from the executive minutes, and the discussion be read, and that now becomes part of the public, instead of revoting on it?
Sure. You could do it if you have to, but it's, it's not that complicated a motion, really. It just, really, was just a motion by the board to seek candidates for consideration for the filling of the police chief's position, to consider all candidates who would apply, including the existing chief.
Question. I believe the applications have already been sent out. The request for applications has already been posted.
Well, the, the effect.
Does it have any effect?
The event, everything should probably be redone going forward, from the date that you have an effective vote going forward, because I would tell you that the vote that was taken in executive session, although it is going to have no effect going forward. So just to cover all of the requirements that should be in place, the vote should be made, and then follow up with the new procedures that are going on.
Okay.
Or could you, sorry, Paul. Could you, right now, reaffirm the vote that was already taken, so that that vote would be effective, just because?
From what you said, the vote isn't, is void, because it was taken in executive session, or it wasn't?
It's really of no effect.
Right.
It really has no effect, and to reaffirm it is not gonna, is not gonna do much. I mean, they, they really should make a new motion.
Because, and again, I defer to the attorney, but I, I just think it is an administrative thing that the vote was taken, and so the vote would be binding in some way. The only reason that it's, was supposed to be the open, open meeting is that we wouldn't be withholding information from the public, but if you read it, if you read the executive minutes, then the public would be aware of the vote that was taken. I'm not sure if there's any other, but I'm just.
No, I mean, I think we're, might be an over discussing a topic that we haven't dealt with.
I don't disagree with the concept of administratively, that it makes sense to do. I just think that it's going to be cleaner going forward, if there's a new vote to put the position of chief out, out to bid. Separate and apart from anything that was done with the vote that was, that was made in executive session, and, and also to allow any discussion with respect to that vote to take place here in open session now, whatever discussion there may be.
Thank you.
Through the chair. The previous is, we already put out stuff in the paper.
Yeah. I mean, it's out there. All you're doing is reaffirming that. You're gonna be having applications. If you take a vote, and the vote is to go out for bid, you've already done it, you can't undo what was done, and you've got a vote that supports what you did in the past, so going forward, you make the position. I mean, it's not, it's not the situation where you have candidates that you're interviewing to do this.
Right.
So I accept the possibility for that.
But I guess in order to do what we're doing on item 6, you should probably start out with.
Is it item 6?
Yeah, you don't know, I mean, you're short about 14 things there. I don't know, so you got another copy of the?
That's up.
So in any event, I would like to, in that case, if everyone's ready, I'll pose a motion to, what was the word, to put the?
Put the chief's job out to bid, and advertise it for the 31st of March.
Okay, and advertise it for the 31st of March.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. All right. Now, we got the job description. I don't know if you, if you guys had a chance to look at it? I know you helped write it, so we'll have a chance to look at it. The only thing, and actually, when I was talking to Mr. Donahue today, the only thing I mentioned, you got in there the two, two months for moving into the town, and I don't know if, I guess as far as discussion goes, do you think that would give people enough time if they were, you know, if they had to sell their house and come here and buy a house? Or do you wanna make it six months?
If they want the job, they will.
Yeah, but you gotta, you gotta allow them to actually make money, or get a decent offer.
We could, we could talk about that, you know.
All right, yeah, 'cause I'm just thinking, you know, I mean, in, in theory, obviously, they could start.
But I just wanna emphasize that the primary residence gotta be in East Long Meadow.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, but then, but like I said, you know, especially where house sales are now, they're not necessarily flying, flying off the proverbial shelf, so if we give them a little more time to, to do that.
They're having a good house for sale.
Given that, I don't think, I think that's against a lot of steer people towards a certain house, so. But in any event, if that's something that, you know, obviously, we, at some point, I don't know when, what was the deadline for the applications to come in?
February 1st.
Okay, so when's our next meeting?
Uh, February 9th. No, 2nd.
2nd. So as long as, I'm guessing, as long as we have this ready before they come in, so if you wanna think about it, we can discuss it on the 2nd? I mean, I, you know.
As far as what?
Just changing the months to, from 2 to 6?
Yeah. We could change it to 6. We could make a vote tonight.
Okay. All right. Do we have to, Jim, do we have to vote on changing that one item, or can we just change it and then vote on the job description?
We should, probably amend the job description, change that. I am in a vote on the job description. The job description without change is acceptable.
But if you make the job description change before we vote on it, we wouldn't need to amend it.
'Cause we haven't voted on the job description yet.
Yeah, so if you're gonna make that change, it would be as?
So make, propose a motion to accept the job description with the change in the?
Well, it changes, 'cause I have something.
My, when I, if, at least identify what the changes are, they're being paid, so when you read the description, you can see the change.
All right. I can make notes here and have it changed.
Okay. What changes?
I'd like to have that. It serves on the emergency management team for the town of East Long Meadow.
Which page would that be?
That would be page 2. And it would be this second paragraph from the bottom.
Okay, that was struck out before, and we'll reinstate that.
What was happened was it was struck out to be the management director, but it didn't, doesn't say anything relevant to him serving on the emergency management team.
Okay, great.
Which he does now, that's.
All right, so up and down, will serve on the emergency management team.
Or serves on, however you wanna order it.
Oh, serves, that would be, that would be consistent with the language, yeah. Serves on, great.
And, so one, two. I just have questions about the second paragraph. I'm not sure how that works. On page 2 still.
The second paragraph down?
The second paragraph down.
The one errors? That one?
No. And can that be cleaned up a little bit? Maybe that's one of the ones you vote in, and then fix it later.
I think what it's doing is it's describing what the job entails, and, in this section, and saying that errors in the police chief's job could result in personal loss of entry, et cetera, et cetera. So therefore, it's a, it's a very, it's a highly responsible position.
And not to be nitpicky, but I might wanna say errors, errors by the police chief, or in the course of the police chief's activity.
Okay, sure, yeah.
Or, or job, just to be a little more, you know, in the performance of the police chief job, I guess.
So how about this? In the performance of the police chief's job, errors could result in, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, that sounds good.
This was the first one you wrote?
Well, like I said, the only problem is, we have to, we have to vote on it on the 2nd, I guess, but the people who are, the people who are coming in on the 5th, who have their applications, and by the 5th, don't know yet that it's a, they have to move to town, so.
Okay. The other piece of it is that it does say that we can change this, make any of the options that we need to do, so I'm comfortable with that.
There was a question I received on the internet, by email. It says applicants must be Massachusetts Criminal Justice Training Council certified. This person from Connecticut was asking, "Will the town allow for an equivalent state certification that is certified by the Massachusetts Training Council?" What I understand is the state of Connecticut's training is certified by the Massachusetts Training Council, so it's not officially a Massachusetts Criminal Justice Training Council certified. I, I, again, this is their question, yeah.
Well, through the board?
Yeah.
Actually, a certificate in Connecticut is good for all of the United States compared to Massachusetts. Massachusetts is only good for the state of Mass.
Okay, so this is what they're asking, I believe, right?
So you would think it'd be okay, obviously, it's a, yeah, okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll put in language for equivalent state certification.
All right, so if everyone's?
Oh, and sorry, are we gonna change the 2 to 6, or that was okay?
Any other changes?
Is it 2 to 6 a month?
Yes.
Or is it?
No, it's, we're changing the 2, to the number 6. We're not going 2 to 6 a month.
Okay, that's what I thought you were gonna say, 2 to 6 a month, okay.
So provided the chief shall be allowed six months in which to meet this requirement.
And obviously, I would think, without abusing the privilege, that could even be flexible, given housing markets and, and, you know, whatever, but not to the extent of, three years from now, they're sitting here with the same laws, so. All right. All right, any other comments or changes on the, on the job description? All right. I'd like to propose a motion to accept, to accept the job description as written with the changes noted in tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Aye? Did you vote?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't hear you. All right. Next item is the Advisory Board. As you, as you know, we put out a request for townspeople, interested parties to apply for the Advisory Board to, to help select the chief. I had a couple of questions. I don't know what, does the board have any, I guess we're looking for a number of people, and I've got a couple other questions regarding that. Does the board have any thoughts on the number of people on this Advisory Board?
Through the chair?
Yeah.
I'd say 5 to 7 people.
Okay. Something, Thor?
My question is, do these people need to live in town?
Yes. I believe that was, I think, they have to live in town, right?
It didn't say it on the document.
Yeah. Yeah, they have to be townspeople to, to sit on the, on this board.
It just didn't say, so.
Okay. I have no problem, I was thinking 5 myself, so, and I was also thinking, here's one to throw out to you guys, 'cause I was thinking about this today.[1744.75] Should the fire chief be on the board? Have another public safety?
Not if he's not, if he's gonna be an applicant.
The fire chief?
I'm sorry, my bad, I'm sorry.
That's okay, because I'm thinking he's another public safety official and he's gonna, you know, have to work with a person, and I thought he might be, have some good input, especially in the area of hiring a chief-type person, so that's just my thought, I.
I'd rather have them not be town officials.
Okay. That's obviously up to the majority of the board, so.
That will be an unbiased vote, though.
Okay. And then, um, okay, so, do we have, let's see, how can we do this? So you don't care if it's 5 to 7, so if we say 5 candidates?
Billy, what's the reasoning for 7, through the chair?
What'd you say?
What's the reasoning for 7?
Well, it's just every board that the town seems to pick are 7, but I'm okay with 5 myself.
Okay, 5 is.
Um, I propose a motion to have the advisory board to choose a new fire chief, I mean, police chief, sorry, Paul. Be, um, 5 members.
5 residents.
5 residents.
Are they choosing, or are they just going through the applications?
We're the ones who, I assume will be the ones who pick the final people.
Okay, because you said choosing, so.
Well, okay.
So they're recommending?
Yes.
Okay. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, the next item is the authority of the advisory board. And unless I'm wrong, because I wasn't on the board then, I believe 10 years ago, the advisory board actually interviewed, chose, and brought a candidate to the Board of Selectmen.
They, they actually hired an assessment center.
Oh, okay.
Which reviewed 13 candidates and made a recommendation of 3.
Okay, and the board chose the final one?
The board chose the final one, right.
Okay.
So, through the board?
Yep.
What I don't like about, when I read that about that board, they picked 13 people, and we hired number 13 on the bottom of the list.
But that doesn't mean he was the least qualified.
No, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying, you know, the, in the recommendations, it said, not recommended for the job, and we still hired him.
Well, I thought they brought 3, if they brought 3 candidates to the board, then he had to be one of the 3 candidates.
Yeah.
So he was recommended by.
Actually, and again, I'm told this historically from back of 2004, was that they actually hired someone, went through the process, and the person in the end declined.
Okay.
And so I don't know where the process went from there, but, but that's what I understand.
All right.
Yeah, I don't know why, did they go back through the list, or?
Yeah, I don't know.
You don't know, or you hear that?
No, I wasn't on the board then. I just look like I've been in this position 20 years. Hey, hey. In any event, so, actually, we can, once we, we have, we have some time to think about that, because we haven't even gotten, what was it then like for the applicants for the advisory board?
Uh, February 1st, Monday.
Okay, so we can, we can discuss on our February 2nd meeting. Hopefully, we'll have the applicants and we can discuss that, and then we can discuss how we're, how their authority, um, going forward as far as choosing the next, or helping to choose the next chief.
Yeah, through the board, I just want to ask, we need resumes with these people, whatever.
That's what it asks for, is a cover letter and a resume.
Okay. All right, so now, next item, the town reports, I think we basically took care of their due February 1st and, um, which is next week?
No.
Or is it this week?
Are we doing this timetable, or is that just for the post chief? This timetable that was given to us, are we going over that? Is that part of that, part of number 4?
I don't believe so, I think, um,
Okay.
Number 4 is just the, what we have to do is get, once we get the candidates in, we'll have to, hopefully, it'll be in Monday, we can, or, so we have a meeting next week? I thought, okay, well anyways, um, and then we can discuss what they're going, how they're gonna go, once we get the board, we can discuss how they're gonna go forward, to choosing a new chief, because they really don't have a lot of time, so. All right, so the town reports, basically, we've, we've gone over, under new business.
How about the authority of the board?
Well, that's what I was just saying, we'll discuss that, once we get the resumes in Monday, we can go over the resume, go over the candidates Tuesday, and then we can discuss what they're, and give some thought to what we want them to be able to do. Because I don't know how much, you know, how much authority we want them to be able to do, I don't know if we have the, the finances to have them use, like, study, you know.
When's our next meeting, on the 2nd?
Yeah, a week from today, so.
Yeah, that was a good question, Jim.
Through the chair, I just suggest that we come up with what their scope is going to be prior to choosing them.
As what?
Um, figuring out what their scope is going to be prior to choosing them, because I don't want it to look like
Yeah.
this person was chosen, this group was chosen, and then we decided to be a little more stringent.
Well, my, my personal opinion, I think they should just be an advisory board through the, through the selectmen, and depending on how many people we get, like we do with every other thing we do, we'll let down to 3 people.
Well, that, we can have them do that. We can have them do that.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, then that's fine, then we can, we can, i- if that's, you know, what you're thinking of, then we can go forward, and just say the, the 5 members that are chosen will be the ones who will take the initial candidates and interview them, and whittle a group down to 3, and then those will be brought to us for the final discussion, okay? Does that, does that work?
I believe, because it's an advisory board, you have the right, of course, to look at all the candidates, and you could add one of those back to the list if you wanted to from the, because it's just an advisory board.
Right, but that sort of defeats the purpose of the advisory board, in my opinion, just in my opinion, so. All right, so we'll, so we'll do that, we'll have them have the ability to interview the candidates and bring 3 to us, and then also have the ability, if we see someone in that, in that group that they may not have picked, that we think is, is, I would say limited to 1, because then you may end up with 12 candidates, and we're interviewing 12 candidates, so, limited to 1, so we'll end up with 3 or possibly 4 at the most, so. So I don't know if that's a formal motion, I'd like to propose a motion to allow the advisory board to, to interview the, the candidates that apply for the police chief's job, and I hate to use the word whittle in a motion, but whittle a group down to 3, uh, to be brought to the selectmen for the final interviews, with the selectmen having the option of choosing one out of the ones that weren't, weren't picked to add to that group.
So.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, under new business, we've got a request from the St. Michael's Knights of Columbus, one-day liquor license, beer and wine for Friday, February 5th, from 5 to 8, at St. Michael's Community Center, in conjunction with their pasta dinner, insurance is on file, I'd like to propose a motion to approve that one-day liquor license for St. Michael's.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's a request from St. Paul the Apostle Church regarding one-day liquor license, beer only, on Sunday, February 7th, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM in St. Paul's Social Hall, 235 Dwight Road, in conjunction with a fundraiser, the insurance is on file, I'd like to propose a motion to approve that one-day liquor license.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seven.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, the annual town meeting is Monday, May 16th, 2016. Uh, the petition warrant article deadline is March 1st, 2016. Uh, boards and commission, commissions warrant article deadline is March 1st, 2016. And the Board of Selectmen warrant article deadline is March 8th, 2016, just as notification.
As a notification.
Yep, and now, the Board of Selectmen meeting schedule, now, let me get to that, because, unless I'm wrong, we don't usually meet on election day. And March 1st is scheduled as a, as a meeting day.
There's, uh, 3 Tuesdays in March.
Right.
Sorry, 5 Tuesdays in March, which makes every other Tuesday meaning meeting 3 times in March.
Okay.
But what he's saying is March 1st is an election day, so.
Right, so they shouldn't meet that way, so. And actually, when you get down to it, April 12th is an election day too, we've got a scheduled meeting on, a theoretical scheduled meeting on there, so we wouldn't have that one either, so.
You can move, move the March 1st meeting to a Tuesday, to, excuse me, to a Wednesday or Monday. Those are always options too.
Mm-hmm. So we can do Wednesday, the 3rd, or Monday, the 8th. Although Monday, the 8th, we'd have, well, no, it's only a few weeks, so. I don't know, does the board have any opinions on that, whether we want to move it to Wednesday or Monday?
Um, okay, Wednesday would be.
I mean, Wednesday, what's that?
Monday would be better.
Okay, so we want to move the March 1st meeting to March 8th?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's right.
All right, yeah.
Oh, what are you doing?
The March, the March, the March 1st meeting.
Would go to February 29th?
No, we'll go to March 8th.
Why is it going to March 8th?
Because we have 5 Mondays in, 5 Tuesdays in March, so we just move it up a week.
Okay, um.
March 8th is the, is the selectmen warrant article deadlines.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so why, okay, I'm sorry, why can't we move the day on March 1st to Monday? And that would be February 29th, have it on the 15th and the 20, 29th.
I mean, the 16th and the 29th, because then we'd have the, we'd be going from the 29th to the 29th, as far as, we only have 1 meeting in March. Because as it stands now, we only have, well, I guess we do have one on the 15th, yeah.
Yeah, the 15th.
So, uh, that's fine.
Okay, so move it to, to that Monday?
Yeah.
29th, and then meet on the 15th, and meet on the 29th of March.
Now, what do we do?
We're moving the first, the meeting of the first one day up to the 29th of February.
29th of February?
And then we're going with the 15th and the 29th of March.
15th and 29th of March.
And then now, April 12th, I would suggest.
Moving it to Wednesday?
I would suggest, um, yeah, move that to the 13th.
To the 13th?
Yes.
April?
Yeah. So we just get rid of the 12th, because the 13th is already there. All right, all right.
When we gonna get back to normal with these?
Never.
I think this, I think this will get us back to normal.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll be back on track, more or less. If I could go back, um, one thing I didn't ask for a vote on is the deadlines for the petitioned warrant articles and the Board of Selectmen's warrant articles, so I'd like to propose a motion.
You said that that was advisory.
What do you mean?
You said that was just advisory of those notes, of those petition deadlines, the first?
Those are our, well, those are our deadlines, so.
Right, so can we change those?
No, I don't believe so, I think we've already discussed them, and have those been out to pub, those have been out, the board, our department heads know that, right?
Sorry, I was writing down dates here, sorry.
The, the warrant article deadlines, are those, are those already been disseminated to the department heads?
Who came up with those?
I believe we did at one of our meetings, because for publishing dates and things, we had to get them at certain dates. Because once you get, once you get to March, it's usually March 1st, because if you go any farther than that, then you have trouble getting them into the reminder and whatnot, getting them, we have to approve them all, so.
Well, if we already approved them, then why are we voting on them?
Well, no, not, we haven't, I don't think we've voted to approve them, but we, we came up with the dates for, for the reasons that we have every year, that they have to be done at a certain time, so we can, so we, so we can review them and go forward and get them published, so. So I'd like to propose a motion to, um, I guess I lost the warrant item here, to, to put the, to have the petition warrant article deadline be March 1st, 2016, the boards and commissions warrant article deadline be March, be March 1st, 2016, and the Board of Selectmen warrant article deadline be March 8th, 2016.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just think, um, I think we've had a little more than a week, if I recall, in the past, for the selectmen warrant articles. But certainly that, I guess we can adjust that if it comes to it, so I'll just defer for another time on that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, so we went through the meeting schedules, so, and, and another, some other good news, a notification from the fire chief, we have fiscal year 16 safe grant of $4,837, and a fiscal year 16 senior safe grant for $2,917. So that's, it's always good news to get money in, other than from the taxpayers. Next item.
I asked for that.
Yes, I will defer to you for that.
Okay, um, we have met, the, um, the Housing Partnership Committee met, and the deadline for applying for the, um, house that's for sale at 43 Schuler Drive, the, um, deadline for applying is February 16th to the Board of Selectmen, and then February 22nd, which is a Monday, will be a public hearing, it, um, will accept applications on that day and answer questions. That is the deadline for, um, for applications for that. There are some guidelines, and they're all just, um, they're all defined in the application. So you can pick those up at the selectmen's office, and they're open Monday through Friday, from 8 to 4.
Through the board?
Mm-hmm.
Where can the people get guidelines for that?
The guidelines are in the application, there are some, um, you do need to meet a Massachusetts resident, you do have some income guidelines that you need to meet, which are specified on the application, um, and it is a lottery, so. And they do, the applicants who do come in, um, a completed applicant should include a, um, a loan, a pre-approved loan from, um, from a local bank, or a bank of choice. So hopefully, we'll get some interest in that, and, um, it could be, the price right now is $156.8. The home is valued at $210,000. So it's a nice opportunity for somebody to get into a homeowner, you do have to be a first-time home buyer.
All right, thank you. Uh, next is Board of Health.
Uh, Board of Health, uh, new business, Hazardous Household Waste Collection Day. Uh, the date is set for Saturday, September 17th, 2016, at Mini Chaugreey High School, 621 Main Street in Wilberham, and it's by appointment only with the, with the selectmen's office. You get a call there, or, or selectmen's office. And for more, more information is to come on this, so, um, you know, this is a good thing, it seems to be successful every year, but the only thing, you do have to make an appointment.
And if I might, through the chair, this is, um, our town chair, this is paid for by some of the money that we get from Republic Waste, from, from our trash holler. They, uh, they subsidize the, I believe it's 2,500 bucks that we, that we pay to get into this, so. All right, so that's it, all right. Uh, could you do meetings, invitations, and reminders before we?
Well, before we do that, can we go back to the release of the notes since Attorney Donahue was here?
Okay, well, actually, that's, I think that's a moot point, because we voted on it, we, we voted that.
Yeah, but if we're gonna release the, the, the minutes, is what was the question, if we're gonna release the minutes from December 29th?
Well, I think we, we didn't vote on approving the minutes, so we can do that, but I don't see why we should. Once again, the vote that was taken that day was void, so, um.
Regardless, if we're going to release them, I, I just think it's worth releasing.
Okay, uh, well, first of all, I'd like to make a motion to approve the executive session minutes of December 29th, 2015.
So moved.
Second?
Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, approve to release the open session meetings of December 29th.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. All right, now, could we do many?
Sure, absolutely. Board of Selectmen meeting on Tuesday, February 2nd, at 6:00 PM in Town Hall, here in room 60 at Center Square. Um, town meeting, excuse me, town offices will be closed on Monday, February 15, 15th, in observance of Presidents' Day. Board of Selectmen meeting on Tuesday, February 16th, at 6:00 PM in the Town Hall Hearing Room at 60 Center Square. Housing Partnership Committee meeting, um, on February 22nd, meeting held between 6 and 7 in the Town Hall Hearing Room, also located at 60 Center Square. Completed applications to be returned on or before February 16th to the selectmen's office are brought to the Housing Partners, Partnership Committee meeting on the 22nd, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Town Council. Good to see you. So I'm guessing, the first item, item 15, is just a notification, so that's, um, that's, I know about that, so. Okay, um, and we do have, since we were discussing this, and one more item that we had before, but you weren't here yet. Do you know, as far as the police go, we have, there's a, there's a candidate that is willing to become, be some of a police officer, he's from another town.
Mm-hmm.
The other town does not have civil service. Is there any, I mean, how does that work? Does he have to take a test, does, if it's a, you know, if he's a 10 or 20, or however many-year officer, can he just?
I, Dr. McDermott, candid with you, I have never dealt with the situation where you've had a lateral transfer, where the, either community were not civil service communities. If there was a civil service community, it would really be a great problem. Except for the unemployment list that's out there. But I would have to research that issue and get back to it. out there, but I would have to research that issue and get back to, I do not know the answer off the top of my head.
Well, that makes four of us.
Yeah, through the chair, we just never knew whether you ran into that before.
Yeah.
I never have.
Okay.
I've run into the transfers from civil service community, civil service community and coming off the reemployment lists, but I've never had a non-civil service candidate